Did you get a credit card?
Yeah.
Was it a badge?
Bruce, he sounded really good. Good. And his son was picking him up and bringing him home. And then he's got to be in Salt Lake tomorrow. So Justin is going to take him back over there. He's had a lot. Really good.
Salt Lake does.
Well, I got stents. They're going to fix his heart first. And see if that helps because he had several problems there. And he got several stents, several wounds.
Open everything up. It'll help.
It will. I told everybody, everyone, you know, after they did that to me, I was like, do you have that done?
No, I have an abrasion. It's very hard. It wants to. It all it is, the electrical current as well. And so they go in and they take over this. It's really worth it to electricity. And they can see your pulses. And which one's right.
The heart part was fine. I don't have one. I'm done. I got my paycheck. They're like, where'd they put it? Oh, I know. Now I can do it.
Is everybody ready? All right. 7:30 has arrived. I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Terry Wyden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelag. Councilmember Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve the October 3, 2023, city council agenda as presented.
Second.
Been a motion made in seconded to approve the August, October 3, 2023 agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the consent agenda of October 3, 2023 as presented.
Second.
Been a motion made in seconded to approve the October, or see what is, excuse me, the October 3, 2023 consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, I have some questions on the accounts payable. The vendor 13323, Holland and Hart for Police Civil Service Rules and Reviews. I just want to know the reasoning for that and the process behind that. Feels as if we're paying for an attorney fee on something that is going to have to be paid for twice when we have a panel that has to review it too if there's any changes. So just kind of curious about this.
Yes, the Honorable Mayor, Councilman Weisenberg, the expenditure was for a legal review of the police commission, of their bylaws in the handbook. And yes, I mean, that's what the expenditure was for, was for the legal review of those items.
So the legal review of the new one that they are coming out with because they've been in meetings of it?
Yeah, it is the new bylaws, the new, like I said, of the police commission. It went through the commission and then it went right to legal.
So my curiosity is, it goes, it went straight to legal, but it should have been to a panel, I believe, as far as like the fire commission had to have a panel with three council members on it. And then it'll be, it should go through legal after that, I believe, in case there's any change.
The panel will still occur. It'll be after the legal review before it goes to that panel. So we will still have a panel of three council members that will review it with the three appointees that the council made to that commission. That will still occur, that review. But the legal review of it is, has been done. So when it goes to that, to the three council members, it will have cleared the legal hurdle of that. But I know what you're saying is you like that the other way.
Yeah, if there's any changes that happen, then it has to go back through a legal review. And we're paying $8,100 for this review already that's happened. And if the three council members that sit on that panel decide, well, you know, they didn't like this and would like to see it changed this way, it's got to go back through illegal. So now we're going to end up paying twice possibly. And we have.
Well, if it, if it goes back through legal, if there are changes made, it would just be those items that would be reviewed by legal.
And then.
It wouldn't be the whole document again. It would only be the items if there were items that were recommended to be changed.
And then who chose the Holland and Hart and was a contract made for them?
I know that we have used Holland and Hart for several employee matters, especially the fire commission was reviewed by them. And they are experts in employment law. It's what they specialize in. And that is why with the amount of about 84, 8500, it does not, and it's a professional service, so it wasn't bid, you know, to be put out for bid. And so we felt like that was the logical firm to use for that review.
Okay. Well, one of the questions I have about this is like even if our own attorneys, if they want to go out and get higher, a different law firm to oversee or a specialist or whatever, they come to us and ask us for that. That didn't happen, did it? In this case, I don't think anybody asked us. That needs to be, that needs to be done differently in the future.
This is the same law firm that was used for the fire commission policy. And in that case, it went to legal review before it also went to council.
I have no problem with Holland and Hart. Just so you know, they're, I understand who they are. They're big. They're awesome. They're, you know, one of the leading firms. But like if our attorneys came to us and said, hey, we need, we need to move this to a different firm because it requires a specialist or whatever, even our attorneys have to come to us and ask us to move that, to hire those. And that part bothers me. I think we need to pay attention to that in the future.
Gotcha. Okay. My understanding is the normal procedure is that it does go to legal review before it comes to you. One of the reasons for that is that many of the questions you may have, once it's been legally reviewed, the answer is easy. It will save time for the council when it does come for your review. The council also appointed three experts in addition to the three police commission members, the police chief, a lieutenant, and a sergeant who have been involved in this. Well, I've been involved in it since I got here two years ago. The lieutenant, the prior chief, and the sergeant, I believe this process has been going on for years. And we're getting close to the end.
I just know that the process for the fire civil service was, they had three appointees from the council, the council itself, not just the people we appoint to sit on the civil service.
Correct.
And it has to be reviewed and then changes will be made after that also, right? If.
Potentially. I think it's unlikely that there will be changes even with council review after all that it's been through so far. And once again, I'll point out that even in the prior process, the three council members that were appointed came after the legal review.
I'd like to see that changed in the future so we have some kind of, not, in case something does get changed, we don't have to go twice to an attorney. So.
As, as the city manager said, if it does go back, it will just be on that point. It won't be for the entire thing. And I honestly don't believe there will be many changes after it's been through such a rigorous process.
Any further discussion, Councilman Gardner?
I was just going to comment on this. I think the process we're using is pretty good. Because I can, what I can see happening is when we go to review, if you're on that review board and you're going through that, and then the first question is going to be, has legal looked at it? Are we sure this is checking all the boxes? And then if they haven't, then the next question is going to be, well, we need to have them look at this. And, and then they're going to, we're going to add questions to that, which would add the same amount of time. I mean, either way. So if they got to rewrite it even after we review it, it's kind of a wash. The nice thing about having it done before is you don't have to worry about whether or not what you're looking through is incorrect or not. Then as far as professional service and pay, having the city manager choose that, I understand the, the comment about our attorney has to do that for going outside to hire another attorney because we would just assume they would be doing it. But if they have a conflict or if they got to declare something, we need to know that anyway. As far as them hiring somebody to do the review, I don't, if we had to go through every single thing and approve every small amount, we would be here for hours on end. I mean, that's why they're hired to do what they do. So I think, I think the process, the way it's done, runs smooth. And I don't, I personally don't want to see it changed.
Any further, Councilman Lumen?
I know before anything is brought up to the council, it has to go through legal first. So it makes sense it would go through legal first. I think one of the reasons you picked them is because they do specialize in civil service.
We understood that they did a very good job with the fire service. And this is their area, labor law is their area of expertise, specifically commissions in the state of Wyoming.
Which I would have no problem with. But I do agree with the mayor as far as giving us a heads up that, hey, this is going to go to them and the reason why, just so we're aware. And if constituents have questions, we'd be able to answer them.
Do we note it?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is a public hearing. So at this time, I will open a public hearing and it is approval of the American Legion Post Number 122, applying for a new bingo pull tabs gaming license application for 2023. Is, is there anybody here that would like to speak on that subject at this time? Seeing nobody, I will close that public hearing. We will move on to the next public hearing, which is, I will open a public hearing and it is approving a resolution authorizing a special use permit for Wyoming Downs LLC for a new pair of mutual simulcasting of live horse racing, historical horse racing terminals off track bedding site located at 1602 Inverness Boulevard, Rock, which is Rock Creek Hospitality LLC DBA Pepper Mill Bar and Grill. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to that while this public hearing is open? Seeing none, I will go to the next thing on the agenda, which is citizens' participation. This is a time set aside for citizens to get up and talk to the council about things that are not on the agenda. It is pursuant to Resolution Number 2C-96. It sets a time limit of five minutes for a citizen to get up and talk about anything they would like to tell us that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to us at this time? Okay. Thank you. Seeing nobody, I will move on. The next thing on our agenda is the Community Builder Award. And I will turn the floor over to the members of the City of Rawlins Volunteer Committee.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Each month, we present the Community Builder Award to local individuals, businesses, and organizations for their volunteer service, sponsorship, promotion of programs and, I'm sorry, and events, outstanding service in the interest of the city, and for other contributions significant to Rawlins' quality of life. The Volunteer Committee this month for October 2023 would like to present the 2023 Community Builder Award to Kalia McCurdy, McCuddy, sorry. I believe Myra is going to, has a few more words to say.
We are honored tonight to present the October Community Builder Award to Kalia McCuddy. In the words of her nominator, "Kalia is a perfect example of a Rawlins girl who has stayed in her hometown, dedicated herself to improving it, and keeps working no matter the challenge. She goes above and beyond in her job and supports local events and businesses. A community is built of people who find the right place for them to make a difference and then dedicate their time, talents, and energy to do so. Kalia has done this especially through her passion for history. Kalia has taken her position as the education and outreach manager for the Carbon County Museum into new spaces in our community through her extensive work to find answers hinted at in photos and at the cemetery. Through investigative work with other museums, newspapers, libraries, and more, she finds the stories that show what life in Carbon County has been like over the decades and then shares them with our community in new ways. Her goal is to preserve our history and make it accessible to all. Kalia loves the quiet nature of our community and how we all look out for each other when a need arises. As a historian, she reminds us that Americans have been divided politically throughout the years and that social media is just a new example that shows it. She hopes that political division never affects our community's ability to look out for one another and to come together through all of hardships. She aspires, she aspire, aspires to expand on our caring community by making sure that there are locations and events that draw everyone together and to have fun, no matter who we are or where we're from. Kalia has decided to donate her $100 to Pet Partners of Carbon County to support their work with feral cats and local pets. Thank you, Kalia, for all you've done for our community and what I am sure you'll do for many years."
Thank you all very, very much.
And I think Kalia might have a little.
I am incredibly humbled by this award. It's, I always feel like I'm undeserving of these kinds of things. I can point out so many people in our community who do so much for all of us. It's really amazing that, that I was chosen for this. I don't know where to stand or look. So small in the center of the room. But I really, really appreciate this and I appreciate all of you. I wouldn't have had the opportunity to present all of this history without my amazing job at the museum. And we've got a few really cool things coming up that are, a couple of them are based off of my research. We have a historical walking tour of the cemetery coming up on October 13th and October 20th. It is all based on my research. I planned the route. I wrote the script. And it should be a really interesting time. You'll get a glimpse into kind of how our world has changed over the last hundred years. It's really, makes you thankful for things that you kind of take for granted nowadays or maybe even annoy you nowadays. And then of course, I wouldn't be here without the support of my wonderful family and my boss and my coworkers. My boss has his own kind of little Halloween egg he's trying to hatch. He's got ghost investigations going on at the museum. They're $20 per person. It's a huge fundraiser for us that directly influences, you know, what we are capable of providing for the, for the community. We do have one more day that is open for those ghost investigations, if you're into that kind of thing. The 21st still has a lot of available positions. So please feel free to come and see if anyone from the past refuses to move on. Otherwise, like I said, I am, I am very humbled and I'm very, very thankful for this award and you're all amazing. Permanently a mess, so.
You want to step ladder? We're all pretty tall.
Thank you, Kalia. Thank you. Very well deserved. All right. Next thing on our agenda is the Old Penn Joint Powers Board positions. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to accept Glenn Acopla's, Anita Mayberry, and Amanda Moore's resignations from the Old Penn Joint Powers Board effective immediately and direct staff to advertise the vacancy.
There's been a motion made in seconded to accept Glenn Acopla's, Anita Mayberry's, and Amanda Moore's resignation from the Old Penn Joint Powers Board effective immediately and direct staff to advertise the vacancies. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I was able to talk to a few of these people and it's just serendipity that it all came, all three of them at one time. So there's no bad things happening. It's just the season, people getting busy, other things happening in their lives that they all happen to happen at the same time.
Life's getting annoying.
Yep.
All right. Is there any further comments? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is Rochelle Ranch Golf Course Advisory Board. Councilman Wells?
I move to appoint Tanya Taylor to the Rochelle Ranch Golf Advisory Board for a term ending December 31, 2024.
Second.
There's been a motion made in seconded to appoint Tanya Taylor to the Rochelle Ranch Golf Advisory Board for a term ending December 31, 2024. Is there any discussion? I would like, is Tanya here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, of course you are. I know who you are. Come up and tell us why you'd like to be on this board.
Well, let me tell you, you guys have seen me before. I serve on the shooting board and so, and some other committees in the community. And so I always am amazed how much people don't know about things that we have in Rawlins. We have so many places and things to do here. And so I always feel like a multitasker, that I need to promote more things like that. So I actually had someone I met in the store one day that said they didn't even realize we had a golf course. I'm like, how did you miss that? So even the sign on the interstate. So I am not an avid golfer. I mean, I have played golf, played golf in high school, was not the greatest. But like, like I said, I'm not a great shooter either, but I serve on the advisory board because I have gifts that I can, you know, attribute to that. So that was something that I felt like I needed to apply for because I'd really like to promote the golf course more, not just, you know, to people coming through our town, people even in our community maybe that aren't aware of things that are going on, activities. And of course, my number one thing is always youth. I'm a school teacher, so I'd love to bring more youth. Um, I'm a school teacher, so I'd love to bring more youth programs into the community. So, I would love to serve on the board, and, um, that's how I feel.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting has closed, and motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Tanya, and now your work's cut out for you some more. All right. Next thing on our agenda is, uh, reports and information. This is, uh, the first thing, is DDA and Main Street and Hub reports.
Honorable Mayor and Council, good evening. Um, so I'm gonna kind of cover a little bit of all gam- gambit, that's, gonna cover a little bit of everything tonight. So, I just wanted to let you guys know, um, yesterday, or the last three days, the National Association of Counties were here, they were holding their, um, Western Interstate Region, Regional Meetings, um, so NACO, and it was really cool to visit with, um, some of the other counties in the Western Region. And yesterday, Leslie Jefferson and I did a presentation about economic development and, um, tourism in the county and in the city, and so, they had some great questions, and it was really neat to see, um, another national, um, group come to Rollins, and it, yesterday was a busy day, and we had the Wyoming Office of Tourism here, um, Vice Mayor Sanger got to meet, um, two people from them, and they were walking around downtown, so it was a busy day on that, and then some other fun stuff. Um, I also wanted to remind everybody about the Brownfields Meeting next week, it's next Wednesday night on October 11th. Um, I really want to give a shout out to Sonia and Myra, um, they have been working diligently, we wanted to make sure that we, oh, yes.
No, this is for later. I just had to turn it on, don't get distracted.
Um, Myra and Sonia and the county, we wanted to make sure that all contractors in Rollins, we wanted to make sure all commercial property owners, um, were invited to this, so the county, um, the Cessers Office was really good, they got us there, all getting postcards, um, I think, what, we're up to 700, Myra, or something like that, between contractors and, um, commercial property owners. We just want to make sure everybody's getting the word out. And so, Sonia, um, was working on that, Myra was over there.
And Valena.
What?
And Valena.
And Valena, so it's been a team effort, so, um, again, next Wednesday from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And then, if you guys have time, again, there is a training that Yvonne from the EDC is hosting in the afternoon. So, um, I wanted to give an update on the hub. Um, so, the Carbon County Startup Challenge, we're getting ready to, um, get ready to kick off 2024, and that'll be right, um, in January. We already have between some hub funds and some Impact 307 funds, the pot, the pot is already at 12,500 for the Carbon County Startup Challenge 2024, so that's super exciting. And we have two stakeholders, um, Jay Graybo and Scott Thayer, that are talking about, they were, two of our judges last year, continuing to be involved in that program, so that's exciting. Um, update on the workshop, which is the trailer, the STEM trailer, and we're still working on some logistics, so they were not coming this week, um, but they will be coming next week and getting them set up for the next three months. But I did, had to let you guys know, last month, we thought we'd have them ready for this week. It'll probably be next week, just some logistics with, just paperwork, so. And then, the last thing you guys have on your, um, in front of you, is the art beat, super, super exciting. Um, we have 18 artists, we have the schools, all the schools are invited, we have 14 locations, um, in the downtown, we have food trucks, we have 10 events, we have five demonstrations. It's gonna be the biggest art beat we've ever had, so, um, oh, yep, so, and so, this website, um, Myra and Linda have been working amazing, all the sponsors, but you can see all the different artists, and you can click on all their different arts that are gonna be happening, excuse me, then all the demonstrations, um, you have somebody, if you want to get some hair feathers in your hair, you can do that, um, you have a little bit of everything, and then you can create. There we go, Mayor! You can get some things in. Um, and then, we have 10 different activities, and again, it's really listed as if the activities are Friday night from 4:00 to 8:00, or if they're Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, but super, super inclusive. Um, you guys have a flyer, you also have a scan me, so you don't have to carry this around, you can just scan it and keep it. So, super busy this weekend, and everybody working together to have the best art beat we've had. So, any questions? Thanks, guys.
Very nice, thanks, Pam. All right, next thing on our agenda is City Manager Report and Staff Report.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. First off, um, a, a couple world records went down yesterday in, in Rollins that we were able to witness as a community and as a city. And I would like to invite Jason Ceyon, our Recreation Director, and he's got some pictures and kind of an outline as to what happened yesterday.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. It's been a, uh, interesting several days leading up to yesterday. And before we kind of jump through here, I just want to give you a little bit of background, um, because we've had this question, why, why Rochelle Ranch Golf Course? You know, why did Kyle pick this? So, I think it was in 2021, he was playing a golf course a few states east on I-80, and he was heading to the coast along I-80, and the, somebody from that golf course said, hey, there's a really long golf course, a great golf course in Rollins, you ought to check it out, you'll see it on the side of the highway, just look to the right and you'll see it. And so, he's, he, he tells the story that he's driving by, and then he sees this golf course, and it clicks that it's Rollin', this is what they're talking about, and he's driving, and he still sees the course over there, he's like, that's a long course, so somehow, he gets Kevin Gannon, our golf professional's, uh, phone number, and gets him down there to open up and let him play. Um, he couldn't, you know, he was traveling to the West Coast, so he didn't have a lot of time to play. So, I think about six months later, he came back, and he played the course, and he recorded a bunch of YouTube videos, you can Google his name on YouTube, and you'll, you'll find a bunch of, and you could, uh, if you, if you search for like Rochelle Ranch Golf Course, you'll see a bunch of videos of him playing our course and kind of commentating as he does it. Well, since then, that was about two years ago, he said, I want to break the world record at Rochelle Ranch Golf Course, and he's been waiting for an opportunity, so maybe two weeks ago, like, not much more than two weeks from today, we get the call, hey, I had an event that got canceled, I want to come to Rollins, and I want to go, I want to beat the world record, long drive. So, of course, we embraced that, and this community came together, and, um, I just, I can't say how, how proud I am of, of our community in general. And, you know, of course, our golf staff and our, our park staff dropped everything Monday to go, because we had a planning meeting Saturday morning at 11:00, and the weather, you know, they're looking at three days later, forecast, us here are going, don't look at three days from now, it's not gonna be the same. And so, the plan was to, to, to hit from hole 14, which is our longest hole, I think it's like four, 650 yards or something, uh, from the back tee. But, it kind of depends on the winds and what they're doing, so as it got a little bit closer, I think it was Saturday afternoon, um, they're like, we all collectively said, we need to have an alternate, uh, plan, if the wind direction is different, because it was going like, wait 10 minutes, and it's going a different direction. So, we came up with a solution with Kyle Berkshire and his team to create a second option to hit from actually the green on hole number 12, which is a par three, hit from the green over to the fairway on 14, which is the same fairway originally he wanted to do. So, in the meantime, so Friday, we had, um, WLC Engineering came out, donated their time, they, they spent a few hours, um, helping us mark the grid, because I'm out there with my OnX, and Abe's out there with his rangefinder, but we're, you know, we're not exact, so we got them to confirm everything to the quarter inch. Um, and then, it turned out that we had to switch locations, so then, Abe and I are out there Saturday evening, Sunday morning with my OnX and his rangefinder, and, and we let the crews know that, hey, it's within four yards, you know, five yards, something like that, and they were, they were fine with it. So, um, and it turned out on that day, you know, that the weather was better, well, the weather was crummy, honestly, for what he was attempting to do, it dropped below 55 degrees, and they usually, they call it at 56 degrees or below. Um, but, uh, it all worked out, and we had a great looking course, great crew and everything, um, to, to make this happen, and I mean, so like I said, our parks crew, our golf, uh, crew, Pam Thayer was a great help, um, Tom Sarvi, uh, joined us out there, um, Council Member Weisenberg was out there, and, and those of you else that might have been there that I missed you, we were all over the course those days, and the high school golf team was out there, I took my son out of school for the day, you know, and it was just a really neat thing. So, what I wanted to do is share some photos of the event that are kind of start maybe Saturday evening into Sunday and into Monday, when, um, you know, two world records were, um, well, there it is, so, two world records in one day. So, the first one that he hit was, um, the, so there's two, there was two current world records, and what we were told originally is, is 515 yards. But Kyle Berkshire, he's a really honest guy, and I got to tell you, he and his father are about as nice as they come, they're good people. So, Kyle said, I know a guy, though, he's an honest guy, and he claims to have hit 551, so that's the record I want to break. And so, he ended up with probably, I don't, Chris, you were out there, was it like, maybe six balls he hit past 551?
Yeah, a lot.
And then there's, so, also to-
There's more than that, because there's some that rolled into the sagebrush, right? I, I bet you 10, 12.
Yeah. And to paint another picture, um, I won't be here for a half hour, I'll, we'll wrap it up, but, but, so where he hit from 12 green, I mean, we had a, a maintenance truck down to the area he was hitting in it, I mean, the people were like little dots down there, that's how far it was, but he had to carry the ball in the air between 480 and 500 yards, depending on where he was. The further right his shot went, the, the further the natural, like, rabbit brush, you know, came out, so he, if he was further right, he'd have to hit like 510, and if he was back over here, we're talking a window of 30 yards wide, that he's hitting a ball, golf ball into at 500 yards away, and almost every one of them, they're about that same direction, it depends on kind of what the wind's doing with it. Um, but, so, then, if he hits that narrow window of 30 yards, if he's a little left, across from the green, there's an island that's, that's a kind of a hill with rabbit brush, and he had, I know, two balls at least that were there, I measured one with my OnX, again, it's probably within four, five yards, and it was, uh, 572. So, that ball could have still been moving and gone further, so it was a narrow window for him to get this shot, and you'll see a kind of a picture where the, the ball ended up. Um, but it was, it was a great day, so then, because the weather was so, what we're all used to, and they had just flown in from San Diego, so they weren't used to this, um, he, he had made a, a plan, I'm gonna come back again at 4:00, that's gonna be the main event, I'm gonna break the record, I'm gonna hit further than that at 4:00. Well, the weather just got crummy, so he switched gears and decided, I'm gonna break the world, uh, ball speed record. And so, we moved everything inside the clubhouse, inside the dining room of the restaurant, he had a big net, um, that he had ordered and delivered to the golf course, we get to keep those, um, for Kevin's golf lessons and whatnot, and then he had his track man to track the speeds, and there was probably 30, maybe 30 people in there, needed ear, ear protection, because when he hit that ball, it was loud, and, um, and so, it took him maybe, I don't know, maybe 40 tries, and he broke the world record, um, for the fastest ball speed, and that wasn't even planned for that day. Um, I'm gonna try to find something real quick, just because I think this might be fun, bear with me here.
Is it the video?
Yeah, I couldn't get the video on there, but, let's see. It was, uh, it was very exciting, to say the least, but, um, so, uh, and before I get into this, I want to say, the, uh, Carbon County Visitors Council presented, uh, Kyle Berkshire and his team with a check, I believe it was for $10,000, um, and Kyle Berkshire donated that right back to Rollins, so he, uh, he donated that to Ribbons of Hope, to the Junior Golf Program at Rochelle Ranch Golf Course, to the High School Golf Team, and to the Town of Sinclair, so he just, they actually, because of how it worked, they got a check, and then his dad was over there writing checks for everybody else, and that was presented last night about 7:15 or so, so, just really good people, really, really good people. And, and then I promise, we'll go to, through some photos, uh, he wants to come back this July, and, um, July-ish, uh, he, he really wants to hit 600 yards, and, uh, and if you read some of this stuff, I mean, it's already national news, Chief Ward just mentioned, he saw it on Fox News tonight, and, and, uh, we already have, we had an interview today, we have an interview, our staff does, with, uh, Cowboy Daily or something, we, we have a few, people are starting to reach out to us, they want to talk about it, which is awesome. Um, but, uh, but yeah, it's very cool. One other interesting thing, why, you know, pick this course, it's not all the wind, because he really had a crosswind, the wind might have helped a little, but it also might have hurt closing down that gap. He told me something interesting, that from sea level to this elevation, you get, you gain about 12, 12 and a half percent more distance in your golf ball, so if you, if you're hitting 100 yards at sea level, you'll hit 112 yards at this elevation, so that could be part of it as well. But, we have one of the longest holes in hole 14 in the nation, and one of the longest courses, and, um, known as one of the top, probably, I think it's the, at one point, it was the 29 most difficult course in the nation, um, so-
I just looked it up the other day, I think it was-
Yeah, and, uh, number two course in, uh, in Wyoming, for now, we're working on that, but, uh, anyway, so let's go through some photos, and maybe you guys can share the, uh, event. So, this is, uh, our crews, we, um, we marked five lines of distance that Kyle wanted from the tee box, he wanted 480, he wanted 500, he wanted 515, and he wanted 551, and then he wanted 600. So, we marked them, we borrowed stencils from the high school for their football fields to mark the numbers down, and then we ne- never ended up using any of those, because we hit from a different location, but we did, we did remark and reuse the stencils and everything, we just circled the ones for the new course, but here's our crews hard at it. And, uh, here's our golf pro on the left talking with Kevin, I'm sorry, with Kyle Berkshire, and then on the right, um, uh, Josh Martinez, Assistant Superintendent out at the golf course, JT Johnson, he's the, uh, golf coach for the high school, and then there's Kyle Berkshire, and then Monty Thayer from the Town of Sinclair, who helped us out throughout the event as well. So, on the right is kind of, these, these guys are called the Bombers, they, they kind of have a following, and they go around the world, and they're long, they're, they're, what do you, long drive competitors. Yeah, thank you. And so, the, I don't think you'll see them on the PGA Tour, but trust me, there's a lot of followers, and they play with a lot of, uh, professional golfers, and, um, and so, these three were kind of working together, helping hype up Kyle and, uh, get him ready to go, and they were looking at wind speeds on this picture, this was actually from the 14 tee, where, when we were looking to try to figure out what our Plan B was gonna be. Here's a planning meeting we had, I think this was probably the planning meeting Sunday morning at 11:00 o'clock, you can see a bunch of people came out to help us, uh, kind of figure out timelines, and everybody had their own weather app, and everyone's weather app said something different, so, but, uh, a lot of people came out to help, can't be more appreciative of that. And then, there's a, a kind of a group of everybody up there on the tee as well, um, yeah. There's Kyle and his team again, the guy on the far right, what was his name again?
Bobby Ray.
Yeah, Tom Sarvi was out there.
That one?
Yeah.
I thought you were saying with Kyle, Bobby Ray is that, on the far right?
Yeah, and, uh, they're both Bobbies, yeah. Um, so there's Kyle, this is, this must be getting ready to hit on, no, that, is that the green or 14?
14.
Yeah, that looks like 14, so, uh, no, because look at the background.
That's 18, that's going towards 18.
Yeah. So, there's him kind of getting ready, and-
I just spend too much time there, I think.
There's, there's his backswing, so, the weather in the background is, is much nicer than what it was directly above us in this photo. I, I always, I look at the, the bending in his golf club right there, it's crazy to me, but, um- But um so there was, I think there was a few more people than what's in this picture frame here, uh wrote them on. This could have been that that money swing, this could have been the world record swing right here. Because they, this is the set where he was hitting uh and caught uh Kevin Gannon, our golf pro, and his niece and nephews uh numbered all the balls the night before, so we had all the numbers. Number eight was the record, the world record. And uh and so and we have, we kept all the other ones that went after five, that hit five fifty-one. We don't know what we're going to do with them yet, but uh memorabilia in the pro shop or maybe a fundraiser. Next year's our twenty-year anniversary at the golf course. So if he comes back in July, believe me, that's going to play right into our twentieth anniversary uh events that we'll plan. So here, this is uh. Engineering Associates came, so I mentioned Doug Boyd and his uh coworker uh from WLC came out Friday to pre-mark all those other lines. They spent a few hours, very thankful for that. Doug was tied up with some other stuff. So Monday afternoon, when they hit the record, he wasn't able to come out here. And Tom was able to reach out to Engineering Associates and they dropped everything. I think he was on his way to Saratoga and turned around and came back. Because Kyle's crew really, a lot of them were leaving the next morning, some of them were leaving that night. They really wanted to get this uh distance marked and certified. So he came out, um this is him setting up behind where Kyle hit from. And the way it works is they'll certify the distances within, I think he said a half inch. But the way it works is he'll certify what we tell him is the distance. So, okay, from this point to where you say that ball landed to this point, he will certify that distance. So what I asked is if they could have an attest on that certification so that our golf pro, who's a member of PGA, can attest saying, yes, this is where Kyle Berkshire hit from, and yes, this is where the ball landed. So um so we'll get all that worked out as well. And there's more um uh Councilman Weisenberg and Tom Sarvi up there um with them as they're marking the survey and Kyle with them as well. And so that circle right there, that's him actually marking the distance of the ball. And like the, I don't know, two minutes from that, everybody's walking on eggshells and wondering what it was. Kyle was estimating, what did he say, between seven, I mean, uh five seventy-five, five five eighty or something like that? So he was pretty pleased when it came out at five seventy-nine. So that was right about the time. So that's, we put that circle in case somebody wanted to move that ball. We had a tee in there as well, but I I wanted to make sure we painted it. And then Abe Colesy, our our maintenance superintendent, we had him drive a a thick nail down into the turf so that next spring, when the the snow melts, we can still find that location. Because we want to put a plaque there as well as up on the green. And quick background, I was a little, I was like, ah, they got to hit from hole fourteen because we got to have a plaque on the tee, you know? And I talked to Kyle and his crew, I'm like, if it's really a coin toss and you're like, well, it doesn't really matter the win, then maybe we do fourteen. But I went to him an hour later, said, I, it doesn't matter to me because now that I think about it, more people are going to see that plaque on the green of number twelve than they ever would at the fifth back tee on fourteen. Because everybody drives right by that because you can't even see green of the golf course from that tee, it's so far back. So now I'm thrilled because we're going to have a a plaque with his name, world record broken right here. And we'll have a little map of where it is so people can go like this and go, where did he hit? But everybody that plays that back nine are going to play that green. So uh you know, it's just going to get a lot more exposure, so um. And we're just, the ideas are rolling with our staff, like, we'll have our own little long drive competition from that same location, you know, and and some fundraisers and things like that. So here's Kyle and his crew at six hundred, they wanted to get a picture because he is really wants to hit six hundred and he wants to do it at Rochelle Ranch Golf Course and he wants to do it this next summer, so we're excited about that.
In the summer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is uh the crew that was watching him uh attempt and then succeed in breaking the the world's fastest ball speed. And this is him, uh that's the net that um they had delivered to the golf course. They delivered two of them and then now they're gifts to us. So um we get Ca- uh Kevin Gannon gets to use those for like our junior golf program and adult uh golf lessons and things like that. It was loud in there, it was really loud in there. Anyways, uh there's our golf pro right there and and Kyle Berkshire right there over the that world record golf ball, number eight. And uh Kevin has that golf ball in his possession. We have some other stuff, he um he signed like his glove and signed some other things, which, and I have actually something for all of you as well. So uh anybody have any questions about the event or anything?
That's awesome. I just want to say that the five seventy-nine point six-six, right? To put that in perspective in the distance, Kevin Gannon, our golf pro, and he can hit a a good shot. Uh Brandon Rideout, another awesome golfer on the course, right? They don't believe they could get there. Kevin said it'd take him three shots to get there. And Brandon says, probably three, himself. So that's a, that's a distance. And the two forty-one point six, a normal golf swing, just a normal average person swinging, I believe is around one thirty, one thirty-five. So.
A good golf swing.
Yeah, a good golf swing. A PGA pro is like one sixty to one seventy-five. So that just, it's amazing. Awesome.
Yeah, so those are actually, he autographed those um for me last night. I wanted to give you guys each of those. I also put a little token on on your your desk there. But we will certainly let you know when he comes back and uh we're excited. But look, look out at at news uh outlets in the next few days. This'll, this'll be the biggest thing in golf, I suspect, for the end of, at least through October. Because there's not a lot, not a lot of other big tournaments going on. But this is a really big deal for Rollins, for Wyoming, for Rochelle Ranch Golf Course, for Kyle and his team. It's really exciting to be a part of, so. Um and thank you all for your support um with the golf course as well.
Thank you. Good job.
Right? Tom?
All right, thank you, Jason. I I a couple acknowledgements I'd like to make about yesterday is our golf crew just had the golf course beautiful. Um I really want to extend a thank you to Abe Colesy, the superintendent, and everyone, uh Josh Martinez and all those guys. They just put on and Jason a tremendous event and they had the golf course beautiful. Very, very good work. I have several things that um to 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 report tonight, several events and a few things. First off, the Carbon County Economic Development is having their annual fundraiser. And that will be Friday, October sixth at six P M at the Platt Valley Community Center in Saratoga. As um Pam Thayer mentioned, the brownfield kickoff is scheduled for Wednesday, October eleventh at five-thirty at the Jeffrey Center. And then also the SLIB meeting in Cheyenne that will, where the SLIB board will consider our application for the ARPA grant. We were, we were under the the impression, it was October fifth. We found out that it is going to be November second is when the SLIB board will consider the ARPA grants. They had a full slate on their agenda for October fifth, and so they pushed that out. And we we do have an an application in for the design of the transmission line, the water transmission line. And all council people, everybody's welcome to come. The the more that we have there, I think, the the better showing, the better our opportunity will be to receive that grant. Last Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, the regional, Region Six meeting for WHAM was held in Long Sutter. The mayor, Councilman Garner, and myself attended that. The main discussions in there, they had a legislative update, they are preparing for this legislative season. They see some of the major issues as housing, affordable housing with the projects that we have. And there were were several other just update things that were at that meeting. The landfill in in Rollins, we had the free dunk day. And I'd like to report that one thousand two hundred and twenty-four cleanup vouchers were used.
How many, would you say that again?
One thousand two hundred and twenty-four were redeemed at the landfill. And that was a total of five hundred and seventy-four point nine-six tons of MSW and things. And the total cost for that was forty thousand two hundred and forty-six and forty-six dollars and fifty cents is what is what that would have equated to.
What was that number again?
Four forty thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents if you take it by the tipping fees at the landfill.
How's that compared to last year?
I don't know.
Okay.
I will find that out.
All right. I just, because this year we had where it was, you know, spread out rather than one day. I just wondered if that made a difference on the numbers.
And this is the second year under this system.
Okay.
And so I will find that out. As was already mentioned once tonight, in collaboration with the Carbon County Higher Education and the Carbon County Museum, there will be two guided historical cemetery tours. They will be Friday, October thirteenth and Friday, October twentieth, starting at six P M at the Rollins Cemetery. Should be an interesting event. The uh about twenty em- em- employees participated in the semi-annual cleanup of the interstate. And that was September twentieth. And we we claimed the uh on-ramp by the TA. And then we also worked on the on-ramp and off-ramp um on Cedar Street as it comes off of Interstate eighty. And it was a good day and we picked up a lot of trash there.
Awesome.
Friday, October sixth is the homecoming for Rollins High School. The parade will be at three, three P M. I'm not sure of the route, but I do know it'll it'll be at three and the football game will kick off at seven-thirty, I believe.
October sixth?
What was it, six?
Is it at six?
It's at six.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, it's at six then. But it will kick off.
What was the game? Friday.
The parade's at three-thirty.
Yeah. Parade's at three-thirty, game at six this Friday. Thank you.
Yep. The last thing is uh community development is working extensively with businesses that meet the definition of junk salvage and wreckage yards to obtain their required special use permits. Four applications have been received and will will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission that'll meet next week. These businesses will also be required to have the uh appropriate fence. Um i- in conjunction, code enforcement is working on on the enforcement of the parking and derelict cars and the on the right-of-way, the the city right-of-ways, especially in the industrial areas near these yards on the the west end of uptown. So we have stepped up our efforts in compliance there. And that's my report.
All right. Thank you, Tom, it's been an exciting week. Like you mentioned, NACO, I just, you know, I did a welcome to them and I got to tell you, I don't think they've ever met here before. I asked John Espy if they hadn't, in his knowledge, they had never met in Carbon County before, so that's a big deal. I was pretty impressed that he could get that to happen. Anyway, so the next thing on our agenda is direction from city council to city manager. Yes, ma'am?
I wasn't here last meeting, but I did want to say thank you so much to Jason and all the city staff for the cross-country meet. Traditionally, that cross-country meet has been in at in Sinclair at their golf course, and that's been for years. And about a year ago, Josh Martinez and I went to Jason and we said, why aren't we doing this here in Rollins? It's a Rollins home meet, it needs to be in Rollins. And um I was very proud to have it take place this year in Rollins and it was a great turnout, a lot of teams. My son, who is a very good cross-country runner, he PR'd, so he was very happy and he said it was the best course he's ever ran. So I just want to say that that was a huge success for Rollins.
Yeah, it is, thank you. Uh Councilman Lemon?
I had a couple of questions, the the town hall, where's that at? For the town?
What what we are still working on for the town hall is is we would like more definition of what we need on our water transmission line. Right now, but what 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 the uh status is, is we are waiting for the design work to to be done, which is the ARPA grant application. We feel that once we have received those funds and we start the 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 design, we will be able to match funding to that and the construction to that, and we'll know much more of what we're up against with that. So right now, that's about all we could report in a town hall. One of the other issues with the with the town hall that we were looking at is the snow removal. And we are working on a comprehensive emergency plan. And that takes a little bit of time to put that together, but we are working on that as a team. Chief Schum- Schumacher is the one that is heading that uh uh committee up. And once we have a a better idea of that, we would have more to share with the community. And those are the two things that we are looking for town halls on.
Okay.
To host, so we are kind of.
Just kind of waiting for our permission.
And we we feel once we have that design work, that there are several state federal agencies that are will get involved with the uh project at that time. And we're just, so we are kind of waiting to have more to present.
Along along those lines, Tom, uh I've been talking to several other council people and I think this is a good idea. And uh what I'm going to ask the council people to do is um make a list of some of your goals. What happens is, we as a group, we we're not getting stuff done fast enough. And so I'm going to propose a different uh method of operation here. And that is every, if we can all send our uh some of our top uh goals to Tom, then he will compile them and then we can, we'll get together, prioritize those, and then probably have to break up into smaller committees so we can be more agile and get some of these things done. And I'd like Vice Mayor Sanger to describe the difference between a project and a goal so that we uh we're putting the right things forward. Do you mind doing that?
No, not at all. So you want to do the fishing pond, that's a project, not a goal. You want to paint all the homes in the city red, project, not a goal. Goals and projects, a goal is um something you can sustain. You would want to see, when we say beautification, it has to be more defined than just beautification. But for, we can come up with a million projects, but how do they fit a specific goal? And that's what we're trying to get to is is. One of mine would be, I would like a single department to be run within the city on nothing but interest money. So that it's not taxed dollar money, purely interest money. So that would mean that goal would be then having enough money set aside to run an individual apartment on just interest. The state's approaching that at this particular point with their their trust fund, the mineral trust fund, the amount of interest that it draws and the amount of. and the amount of interest that it generates almost runs the state. That's not the money that they're getting that they're putting in there. It's just the interest from that. So when you start looking at that, if you've got an individual project you want to see done, figure out what goal it meets. And then put the goal down, not the project itself. Because you can always come back and say, this is the project I think fits this goal. And Councilman Garner may have one that also fits that goal. And so we're trying to get to those goals. Because there should only probably be three or four of them in total. So you want to get to the bigger picture, not to the individual things, but to the bigger picture. Financial sustainability, nonstop.
So where does the, like on the back door there, those goals fit into this? Is this updating that, or is this more specific than that?
It is more specific than that.
Okay.
Yeah. Those tell you what, you know, what we'd like to see. But they don't specify a goal. They specify an overall impression of what the city should be doing. But they're not individual goals. So that's what you're trying to get to is the individual goal. So if you think of something in your head and you go, okay, what goal would fit that project that I really want to see done? That's and that's essentially what you're trying to do, is that. And it can be really difficult. You'd think, oh, yeah, I I just want to paint all the houses red. Well, that's really a project. It'll be done in a year if everybody decides to paint their house red. It'll be done never because nobody will ever make that decision. So that can't really be a goal because no one can actually get that to happen. So find something that does, that you can actually make happen from a project that you have in your head. What does that satisfy as a goal for the city? In total, for the city? And then we and then you can plug project into it. Oh, yeah, it fits that. Then we'll figure out how to decide how to pick those projects to fit the goals.
Well, and when I say prioritize, I mean, we we're going to have to because we can't do everything at once. And the other thing of it is, is if we're going to do 400 things at once, we're not going to get anything done. So I'd like to liken it to hunting with a rifle instead of a shotgun. So I I think we can be more effective if we do it this way. I'd like to give it a try. And that's why I brought it up at this meeting so that there's plenty of time for you all to think about it and have those to turn in either next meeting or by next meeting. And then we can uh, uh, start that process of prioritizing them and maybe breaking up into smaller committees and such like that. Any have anybody have a problem with that?
Did have a couple more questions.
Yeah, sure.
Um, the employee handbook, are we still going to work on that, correct?
We're still working on that. We are, we we have the finalized version through the the work sessions that we've had. What we will probably do with that is um, is invite invite counsel and and we will go through that again with a smaller group of of counsel. We will just, you know, hit the high points again so that counsel is more informed and do a thorough review of it.
Um, next question I have is for a lawyer because I was kind of confused on something. The last meeting, we had a resolution to amend the fee schedule. And I asked specifically when it would be in effect. The email we got from you on somebody who had this had a rec recommendation is not the word I'm looking for, but who asked for information before the amended fees were passed. I noticed the paper was at the old fee, the clerical was at the old fee. But then there was the vendor and consultant listed. But that category wasn't listed on the old. So I'm wondering how we got to add part of the new to the old? Does that make sense? Because it wasn't part of the old fee sheet.
Certainly. The old, the old fees didn't include the outside, did not specify.
Correct.
The outside vendors. And because those other two vendors are not employees, they were listed separately because the other fees are only for employee rates.
Okay.
And so it was just additional clarification.
Okay, and it was okay to, I guess, for it not to be on the old sheet, what did they do in the past when there was a contractor or a vendor? They just counted it as a professional?
No, it would have been counted as an outside vendor.
They they still would have done that even though it's not stated on there?
Exactly. And so the new resolution just added that clarification for clarity, clarification for clarity.
Okay, I I just was confused by that, thank you.
Anything further? Councilman Garner?
I just have a couple of questions to piggyback off that. Um, roughly, how many records requests do we get a month? Just curious.
You know, um, that is a project that we are working on right now to consolidate how records requests are handled. Because currently, they might go in through, somebody might submit one through the city attorney's office. Somebody might submit one through Public Works Department just walking up to the counter. Somebody might call the police department. Somebody might walk up here to finance. So there's not a consolidated point, entry point. So it has been hard to really understand what those numbers are, but also to add in some of the blanks so that they're usually small things. So for example, city attorney's office will receive any number of requests. Sometimes it's a police report, an incident report. Other times, it may be they'd like, somebody might like a copy of a survey that was done for when the when a certain section of sewer line is redone. Another thing that somebody might come in in down here, down to the finance, might be water records from two years ago. What were my, uh, what were my sewer and water rates invoices two years ago, October 2021? So it just depends.
So a couple of months, there's there's a handful every month?
Right, probably, I mean, I I can't tell you what it is because we don't have, there, different places go, different people go to different places. And so that's what one of the projects we're working on is to consolidate the entry and exit point of those, track them and 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 consistency in how those are responded to, timing, et cetera.
Do we have a person within the city that is our designated public records to answer public records or get get that information for them? Like a like a custodian? I know s I know in some stuff, we may not be the custodian of the public record, so you got to go to the the source that has it. But do we have one? Are you are you the?
Well, that's what we're trying to 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 create is a consolidated spot for all the records to go through. So the endpoint and the exit point is the same. So for example, somebody wants a copy of water bills, regardless of, you know, they're not instead of going to the city to the to the front desk here. They'll submit a public records request that will be routed through the city attorney's office. City attorney's office will then direct it to the, you know, the appropriate department. And then they'll send it back to us. That way, just we can keep track of everything.
And kind of speed up the whole process probably? So it's not not so convoluted and everywhere. For the fee increase, I know when we voted this, I was asking about the, um, how you guys came about the pricing. Is it possible to see the documentation or the the information was used to to come up with that schedule? Just the increases?
The increases are are based, like, for example, page, page, copy, like a copy per page. It's just, it's it's based on what it's costing the city to make those copies. Also, working, looking at other cities and their fee schedules. So most cities, including the city of Rollins, has those fee schedules posted online. So it's easy to be able to compare and see what other cities are charging.
Okay, so we don't have a a breakdown of how we came to these numbers? And just just the information sheet is all I'm looking for? If if possible, if you don't have it, it's fine.
It's just a average of what other cities are charging. So Blairmy's charging 75 cents a page. Cheyenne's charging 75 cents a page. Jolette's charging a dollar.
And then my last question, in this, anybody can answer this.
I'm not saying that those are the rates they're charging. They need to step up. Because I can't remember what those, any of the numbers were.
For this, uh, I was just surprised to see it on the agenda. Was this discussed in a previous meeting that, uh, to go over the fee? Just I figured we would have conversation about it a little bit before we went straight to putting it in for a vote. Was it discussed prior? How did we come? How did it? I'm just curious how we ended up passing or not passing it, but getting it on to the agenda to get get this movement.
Well, that had been a review that the fees hadn't been increased since 2018. Also with COVID, just general cost increases, color copies, the cost of making big GIS maps. All of those things have increased. And just trying to just keep with the market.
Right, and I guess my question is, I'm just looking for where the direction came from to work on this. Was this during a council meeting? Because I I've kind of, I tried to look through our council meetings or like back meetings, like meetings I missed just to see if I could watch and see, you know, how this came about, but I can't find anything.
My understanding is that it came about just after reviewing the the rates and that they weren't our, the rates that were on the fee schedule were not aligned with current rates.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I think we've addressed all of our, a lot of our rates, and there's still some rates that, you know, like with the cemetery, for instance, there's a few things there that need adjusting that, in my opinion. But as time goes by, we have to adjust these rates. One idea that came along that would make it to where we didn't have to do this is to we'll set the rates, tie it to inflation so that we don't have to make that decision a year from now. It's it's the rates, and our inflation went up 5%, so it goes up 5%. And and we don't have to have these discussions of where to come from, how to base it on, this and that. This is what we charge. Inflation went up 5%, so now we charge that plus 5%. And that's what we're trying to do with our depreciation reimbursements and such like that. And I think with some of these rates, we ought to consider tying them directly to inflation. This is not my idea, by the way, but it's a great one. And that way, we just don't have these conversations. Every year, it goes up as it should. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I was, sorry. I was just going to point out, Councilman Garner, earlier you had mentioned something about records requests and stuff like that. In the past, our city attorney has been the record request person, right? We we've actually signed that and assigned that. And it's in a, I think, maybe a resolution form or something like that where they are the person, if I'm not mistaken. So that would be the office of, that it should go through in my, if I'm thinking it's correct that way.
I think you're right.
So in in line with this, we went back through our ordinances. And if you read a lot of them, they're tied to a statute from the state. And the ordinance automatically amends if the statute for the state amends. And it says right in them that it does that. And this is along those same lines. The cost of a thing goes up, doesn't change. It's they always go up. Rarely do they go down. And this is kind of that concept of tie it to the thing that always goes up. Because then you're at least keeping in line, your water rate goes up with the cost of inflation. Your sewer rate goes up with in cost of inflation. And that way, you're not waiting 20 years and then going, we got to fix this.
Yeah, and then it's a 30% increase.
Right, and everybody goes, what did you just do? Well, we wouldn't have done anything. It would have just, it would have been a natural progression that had already occurred. And literally, you can do just about everything. You know, I mean, what is the fee schedule for? You can say the landfill. You come to what the cost of the actual landfill is, and then you say, this gets more expensive every single year. A bulldozer goes up 20,000 bucks. So you know that that's going to get distributed over this many tons of dirt that's going to be created. So that's that's kind of where that idea of just tie it to something that continuously, if it's moving, you're already tied to it. So you're not having to figure out every year where to spend money and how to spend that money. It kind of takes care of itself.
Councilman Garner?
Sorry, I just had, I forgot one question. This email that we received on September 25th, are we going to be updated on every records request moving forward?
The, this was a kind of an extraordinary request. Usually, as, you know, they're small requests. You know, police report is three pages. Copies of some water invoices, a couple pages. Maybe a property file over at the, at the, that the planning and zoning or something might be 10 pages, 20 pages. So the scope of this particular request, it was, it was, it was extraordinary.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anything further? Okay, thanks. Moving on, we will go on to new business. On A, I would entertain a motion for the nomination situation, LGLP.
I just ask who's interested?
Is there anybody here interested in in being on the LGLP board? If you don't stick up your hand, you're not going to get it. I for sure am not.
Are you? So do we, so would we nominate? Do we send in a nomination for just us? Or do we nominate for anybody wanting their elected?
You don't have to nominate anybody. The ballot will be produced by the end of this year, this this year, calendar year. And then that's when you make a motion who you would like for the different positions. One is for commissioner, one is for the special district. So you will make a motion on who you would like to heard the ballot. So if you don't wish to appoint anybody, that's perfectly fine. I don't have to turn anybody in. But when the ballot comes out, I will put it on again as a approval.
How often do they meet?
They meet like quarterly, and they meet in Cheyenne.
I'd be willing to. Nobody else is?
It's during the day, too. It's during the day.
Yeah, I got vacation days. It's all right.
I move to appoint Tanya Lumen, council member to the local government liability pool for the elected municipal position.
Been a motion made and seconded to appoint Tanya Lumen, council member to the local government liability pool, LGLP, for the elected municipal position. Is there any discussion? Councilman Weisenberg?
I'm just, it's not an appointment, it's a, it's a nomination, correct? So it would have to be.
That's the word in the motion, you're nominating her. So I will need to get with her to fill out the paperwork.
So you'd have to friendly friendly amendment that.
I'll make a friendly amendment to change the motion to move to nominate council member.
Who seconded that?
Well, I'm going to give it to the.
Vice mayor.
Whoever said. Okay, well, do you accept that friendly amendment? Is my question.
Do you accept?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. And and for clarification, your name and a bunch of others will go in, and then out of that, somebody will be elected.
And I do know the person who has it is running for reelection as well, so.
That's what's on the board docs. Because that's the information that I was provided.
Okay, so is there any further discussion? All right, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Online voting is open.
I just got a question on the motion. It's, uh, in front of us, it's still saying appoint. It needs to say move to nominate. Need to refresh. Or if you have to, you might have to vote in whatever way you choose. Yes, yes. Sorry. I just wanna make sure.
I didn't. I think so, to nominate.
We just, uh, refresh now? Is that what we have to do, or?
Yes.
Close that off and then refresh?
Mine still says appoint.
Should we stain and then just?
Hold on one second. Reload, hold on.
I'm not gonna refresh or I'll get screwed up.
It just disappeared, so.
Right, cause I just, I got, I refreshed on my end.
Okay.
Okay, so online voting is open.
Thank you.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
Probably should be refreshed. Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is, uh, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is, uh, uh, for the American Legion post, uh, Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve American Legion posts, one twenty-two requests for a new bingo pull tab gaming license with an expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
It's been a motion made and seconded to approve the American Legion post number one twenty-two request for a new bingo pull tabs gaming license with an expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Uh, Councilman Weisenberg?
Um, this is obviously new, cause it, they, they let the last one go, correct?
Hey, I couldn't find one at all from when I was doing records. I went through everything. So over the last five years, I wasn't able to find anything. I looked in clerk's index, I wasn't able to find that they had one.
Okay, and.
It might have been under the American Legion, oh, I mean, um, sorry, the Carbon County, um, not American Legion, but the Carbon County Veterans Association. Might have had it, but the American Legion, I was not able to find anything. So this is new. And per our ordinance, all bingo pull tabs expire in December of thirty, thirty-one.
Thank you.
Every year. So they're going to, I will send them a letter in the middle of this month, end of this month, so that if they're interested and they can renew it, it'll be from January to December. It is not when they request it, it's always based on our ordinance, it's for a year, January through December of every year. So that's the reason why it will expire in December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three.
So are they reopening the American Legion? That's the next question, and.
Yes, and you will notice on board docs that the building is owned by the Carbon County veterans. So there is a lease agreement, and John O'Grady signed it as president, and then the other two, the commander and vice commander of the American Legion signed that too. So it is a five-year lease that all the parties have signed, and it's in there. You will see that per our ordinance, it needs to be in a paper three consecutive, that's in there. Plus where they're gonna be located, doing the, the pull tab, the bingo. So they have to have a map of where the location will be, yes, and their application is in there as well.
No, I seen all that, I'm just saying they are for sure opening, cause.
That is what I've heard, yes.
They, they are, and I, for a little more clarification, I, and I have to abstain from this because I am a member of the American Legion post number one twenty-two. Um, but what it is, is there, the Veterans Association, uh, very few people, you know, it's gotten less and less. The American Legion, uh, has secured the lease on that building and, and intends on, uh, running at full steam. And this is one of the methods for, uh, raising the money to take care of the building and to, uh, fulfill some of their, you know, they go to all, uh, what the American Legion does is all the, um, uh, veteran funerals and, I mean, lots of stuff. But anyway, this is going to be their way to, uh, help finance theirselves. And like I say, I have to abstain. Any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Mayor, you did vote.
Oh, abstain, sorry.
Okay, so you would like to change your yes to abstain?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm off on the next thing.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Apologize, thank you for catching that, that's important.
Okay, online voting has closed. Motion passes with five yeas and one abstain, the one abstain was Mayor Wykam.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next thing on our agenda is another special use permit, uh, Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve resolution approving the special use permit for Wyoming Downs LLC to be located at sixteen oh two Inverness Boulevard, Rock Creek Hospitality LLC, DBA Pepper Mill Bar and Grill, more specifically described as Lot One, Block Three, Highland Hills, first addition of the city of Rawlins, Carbon County, Wyoming.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
It's been a motion made and seconded to approve the resolution approving the special use permit for Wyoming Downs LLC to be located at sixteen oh two Inverness Boulevard, Rock Creek Hos- Rock Creek Hospitality LLC, DBA Pepper Mill Bar and Grill, more specifically described as Lot One, Block Three, Highland Hills, first addition of the city of Rawlins, Carbon County, Wyoming. Is there any discussion? And, um, thank you, Lou.
Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission didn't meet on September twelfth, and, uh, I've asked Mr. Keith Little to come this evening if there was questions from the council members about the establishment. Um, it passed the Planning and Zoning Commission's, uh, vote. Now we're here seeking council's approval for the special use permit.
Does anybody have any questions? I have none, um, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council.
Please open online voting. Thank you, Lou.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Little, for opening a business in our town. All right. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is, I don't know how I got this. I'm on a different, okay, cool, I'm back to on Earth. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is a, is a, for discussion, um, for the designation of the two thousand and twenty-three funds for Wyoming Community Gas. Um, what are your thoughts?
What was the money used last year? It says baseball field, what was that ten thousand used for?
Dog park.
No, the baseball field.
The baseball field.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was baseball field.
Yeah, it says in there the VFW baseball field for ten thousand.
That's right.
Three oh nine thirty-three.
Yeah, what did they use that money for?
A lot of.
So, um, Honorable Ma- Mayor and Council, you'll see that money go to use hopefully third week of October. Uh, we use that ten thousand dollars and change. Uh, we actually use that as leverage to write a matching grant, so we dou- more than doubled our, our money with that. So this, uh, third week in October, a side project is the Generals baseball field in the sports complex is gonna get laser graded and brand-new infield mix. Part of the infield mix we bought in last fiscal year budget. The company do the laser grade and install is from this year's budget. Um, as far as VFW baseball fields, because of the community gas, because of council's, uh, support with a capital item, and because of using those as matching, uh, leverage to write a, a matching grant to add an additional twenty thousand dollars to that project, we actually this summer will, or this fall, should have three of the four VFW ball fields completely laser graded, uh, infield mix, new infield mix put on and everything. So, uh, we're getting a lot closer to that two thousand and twenty-six tournament that we're trying to, we want the last summer before, the year before that tournament to be chilling and not worrying about anything. And so we're on our way, so it, so it's good. So three of the four will have that, and then we do have some other concrete and asphalt repairs that we have to do and some other things.
How much more needs to be done to be prepared for a tournament?
To get the fourth ball field completely done, uh, it's about, um, it's about eighteen thousand dollars. So by having this company come in and do everything at the same time, we save, uh, there's a two thousand dollar mobilization cost, and that's fuel and housing and things like that from, to get them from point A to point B. So the more we can get done at once, the less it costs, but, um, so just the infield part would be eighteen thousand, um, the asphalt and concrete, just a, a good, a good heavy-duty duct tape would be about ten thousand. Um, and then, um, other, other improvements, you know, uh, we're doing so much in-house and so much with volunteers from Little League that we're saving a lot of money by doing that, but it's hard to tell. But, um, as far as those fields and the concrete, that's about what it would cost.
Thank you.
Councilman Wells?
My thoughts are that we, the baseball fields are in desperate need. And if we wanna be able to hold big tournaments, I feel like I would, I would support putting all this money towards the baseball fields again this year. That, that's my thoughts.
Councilman Weisenberg?
I'm in that agreement, but I don't wanna see, I honestly wanna see it go to the Generals field. Um, and the reason I say that is cause they are in dire need of a new scoreboard there. And it hasn't been a new scoreboard there for, since UP done the whole thing, um, back in the day when it was first built. And there's a bunch of electrical issues and stuff like that with it. And I know for the mount here, if we could get some volunteers in, in the electrical side and stuff, we can get a nice LED scoreboard for that kind of price. That's just my thought. Recreation for sure. Uh, I do know that the Generals wanna be able to try and bring a regional tournament here again, and that would help out there at that point. And maybe we can find, maybe a matching fund also could help get maybe two scoreboards or something also, I don't know.
If I could add to that, that's our goal. Whenever we receive any type of funding, we're always looking for matching grants. Um, I should point out that I did submit a grant for forty thousand dollars for the sports complex, but it's more specifically for the soccer fields and the softball field, because we couldn't even play football on the soccer fields this year, so. And we do have that, but if we have, wherever this goes, even if it's not parks and recreation, it's always a great opportunity to try to find a matching grant, whether it be a fifty percent match or twenty-five percent match, whatever it might be.
I'm sure Wyoming Gas would love their name on a scoreboard.
Vice Mayor Sanger?
So the tournaments that you're referring to, do we know timeframe for these tournaments?
I, I think, uh, the Generals are looking next year, the year after possibly too, right? Is that? I, I can't remember exactly. I know my son had mentioned something about it, and I'm not positive, but even at a home play, they still need a scoreboard there, and, you know, it does not look good when you have bits and pieces running on a scoreboard and, or none at all whenever they help host any kind of team.
I think I heard that on the radar, and I know the good news about the Generals field. I know that, um, they had a representative when we had the, the, um, work session here, and they were concerned about the playability and the safety of the ball fields and people traveling here. But they had at least five out-of-town teams come play this year, because we did make some improvements to those fields in the last couple of years. Um, so the turf area is in, in fairly decent shape. Um, it's getting better every year. When, if we can figure out the water restriction situat- situation, we can overseed, put some good compost down, we can fix the turf. It's the facility and it's the scoreboard, exactly what you're saying. Um, I will say though, the facility at the sports complex is a lot newer than the facilities at VFW. So it's kind of, so the turf at VFW is in better shape because it's been there a lot longer, but the facilities are old, and you can tell. The sports complex is much newer, so the turf isn't quite as established, and it, it needs a little bit more love than it's, uh, received and, and it's getting it. But the facility is not horrible, but the scoreboard, you're right, they have pointed out that.
So I guess, I guess my question would be, if I have to put my money somewhere, dividing it is not going to work. So if I have to put it someplace, where would you like me to put it so that you get the biggest bang for your buck? Is it in a scoreboard? Is it where they run? Cause they run on the grass, that's where they are, they're not climbing on the scoreboard. So is, is that what is going to make people come for the tournament in twenty-six? Or is a new scoreboard gonna draw people well before twenty-six?
Well, I know that obviously the fourth field that we are, that we don't have on schedule at VFW this fall is in, in the best shape out of all, all four. That's why we chose to do that one last. So I, I guess to answer your question, before that two thousand and twenty-six tournament, the infield has to be redone. It really just, it does, and that cost this year, right now, is eighteen thousand dollars. Next year, I don't know what it would be. Although I, this is just such a big picture here. Our staff's gonna be on board with these guys when they're doing the work. It's what they do, they've done a bunch of fields in Laramie, and their parks director swears by them. But we're gonna learn, and we're gonna be hands-on and eyes-on when they're here, so we can maybe learn how to do some of it in-house. And maybe we just order the infield mix and we figure out how to laser grade the field, maybe with help of the public works or a local engineer to laser grade and get the, get that out there. So it's, it's a moving picture, I don't, I guess I don't have a great answer for you. I do know that Wyoming Community Gas want their logo on one project and one location, and not something that's mobile, you know what I mean? Um, I, I honestly don't know the status of the scoreboard other than they, the Generals wish to replace it. And it's a rather extensive, so we got a grant with Little League to replace one of the Little League scoreboards. And I wanna say that cost was eight thousand, and those are tiny in comparison to what, um, Generals have, if they wanna replace the same thing. So I would imagine their scoreboard might be twenty-five thousand or so.
I was looking at some, and they were twelve, eleven, ten, you know, anywhere from nine to twelve, right? In that ballpark range, but, um, I just know that it's a lot of electrical issues with that scoreboard, and I do believe that they have had electricians look at it, and it's not a pretty picture with it.
I get, if, my thought, if, if you're looking at what my opinion is, I feel like knock out the VFW fields, cause we know the two thousand and twenty-six state tournament can be here if we can get our fields done. I don't really know exactly, is there a date set for? And they haven't actually approached me about a, like a, a state tournament or anything on the Generals field. They just, what they've approached me is trying to get teams out of the area to travel here. So that's why we've done the safety improvements there. But for me to sleep a little bit better at night would be knock out those VFW fields. Because every year we have to put some work into there to get ready for this 2026 tournament. Because we want it to be a huge success. It's going to bring. Hundreds and hundreds of people in town for a week and they're going to book hotels and they're going to eat at our local restaurants. And they're going to, you know, enjoy Rollins. So it's a, it's a big deal. And like I said, that last summer, it'd be nice if we're like, wow, look how great they look. Let's be working on the Generals field then. And then, you know, instead of on the 11th hour, we're scrambling to try to get the VFW fields. That's kind of how I look at it.
Councilman Garner.
You know how I feel about the tournaments and trying to get as many as we can in town. The scoreboard, I don't think benefits us to, to put money into. I, I just, it doesn't bring more players. We're still going to get the same amount of players and we can still have tournaments. I like the idea of the, of fixing the grass or the turf. You mentioned the Little League. The fields aren't playable. Is that correct?
No, that, I'm sorry if I, if I said that.
Just misunderstand.
No, that. At that work session, is that what you meant when we met in September?
No, just.
The Little League fields are playable.
Little League.
Oh, the soccer fields?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And football fields.
Those, sorry, not Little League. So the football fields. Aren't, they're playable, but they're, they're.
They're, they're. So they were in pretty bad shape when I, when I came here and we've done our best to aerate and try to. Fertilize and get that turf going, but the water restrictions honestly sort of put it over the top. And so we, when, when you, when you have an unhealthy soil, the weeds like it. And we actually worked with Carbon County Weed and Pest. We contracted with them last week, I believe. They sprayed the soccer fields and Generals baseball field and the infields of the Little League to try to stay ahead and get, you know, be proactive on the weeds. But what those, those soccer fields, a lot of it, if you look. You won't see much green in the late spring when everything else is green, but you'll see green in like September. But it's not turf grass. It's weeds and it's thick, like harmful type of weeds. So when we walked them this year, we decided we, we can't play our football, even our tackle, youth tackle football there. So they've been playing at the Generals baseball field because we also needed lighting. So that's why I submitted a grant for $40,000 so that we can start knocking out those soccer fields, even if it's one at a time. Get some good seed down if we can get the water and then put some good compost over the top and take care of them.
Will that 40 get that covered or will it?
Well, I. It'll, it'll go quite a long ways on those soccer fields, but a portion of that I want to hold back to make improvements to our softball. Because as you know, because you attended the last sports team meeting, we have another one coming up early November, I think. The idea of this sports teams meeting that Councilman Garner's talking about is we're meeting twice a year with different sports groups from swim team, soccer, basketball, baseball, football, every kind of volleyball, any kind of sports organization you can, that you can think of in Rollins, we get together. What can the city of Rollins do to help facilitate you bring in more tournaments to Rollins? Whether it be on our facilities or school facilities or whatever. And that was Councilman Garner's idea. And working with Sean Metcalf, we met last year. Because we want to recruit more tournaments in Rollins. But, but we, we need to fix those fields, I guess, is the.
And then I just had one more suggestion. It's completely away from the sports and stuff. The sprinkler system or at the cemetery. If, is that, I kind of roughly remember issues with that. With, we don't have automation, right? And so it requires a lot of man hours to, to maintain that. And it, it seems to be something that we, I hear a lot about. Why don't, you know, why is the cemetery not as green as it used to be? And, and then I think it's better, much better with, you know, the restrictions this year. Having this money put to something like that. Would that better benefit us? Having automation put in there so that you can, you lose, you're not putting so many man hours into it and you can move that man hour, those man hours elsewhere and in turn save that money?
I can give a, you want to go first or?
Yeah. It used to be automated.
Yeah.
If you go, there are. 52 boxes in the cemetery. And some of them, you'll pop the cover off and you'll see a regular irrigation sprinkler that has wires coming out of it that are connected to nothing and its solenoid has been plugged. Some of them you will see that they've taken that irrigation sprinkler. It's still there, but they've put another valve behind it that's manually, you turn it on and off. And its valve has been plugged. Some of them still have the wiring. They still have the solenoid, but the wire goes nowhere. So there was at some point, there was a automated system in there. My guess is, is over time, as they break, if you're not a sprinkler specialist, you don't know what to repair in here. So the easiest thing to do is to take it out and go with the dumb thing, which is just turn it this way. And that works. But it, there are 52 of them that you have to go deal with. And there's 52 of them because I, my guess is, is the piping size was incorrect to begin with. The pipes that run down through the lines are not large enough to run the number of sprinkler heads that you have. So they ran another line down the middle road that runs east and west. They ran another line down there and, and came into the backside of all of those lines and put valves there. So they have to turn on top and bottom of each section to have enough pressure to run old sprinklers in those sections. Some of them are automated, some of them are not. It's not an overly difficult process. It's time consuming. The cemetery, I did a map of it and drew where all the boxes were so I could kind of tell where everything was. Is basically thirds. You have the third from what in the cemetery is called Seventh Street down to First Street or Public Works. You have the third from Seventh Street going the other way over to 10th and then from 10th up to 13th. So you have thirds and you could do, you could do the cemetery in thirds where you take care of this and then you don't water that. That's all automated. If you're going to run all of it on one single system, it can be intensely expensive. If you want to dumb it down where you go on, you just turn it on, that's not so expensive. But in total, it could run 10 to 50,000. Depending on who's doing the work, who's digging up the holes, who's, who's putting in the irrigation valve, who's running the wire line? Where's the electrical? There's a box that has electrical that runs around inside of it and goes back in the ground again. Comes out, runs around and goes in the ground. And I'm like, is that live? Because we don't know. It's not connected to anything. But we don't know if that's the actual power line because it's this big round. It's not small. So it could be the power line that ran the whole cemetery. We don't know where it goes. So there's a lot of that. You're going to do a lot of experimentation and where does that go?
Okay, we're, I think we're, I think that's for another time. Yeah. And, and thank you for the research you've done, Steve. I, it's. I can't believe we're doing it manually, but.
Honorable Mayor, could I have 30 seconds?
Oh, sure.
So, so you're right. And, and I think, I don't think anything that's there is going to help us move forward. I think it's all, you know, so we've done extensive research the last year and a half on what it would cost to do it. There's a couple of ways. We can dig trench and run wire. We can do Bluetooth. What we came up with 40 to $50,000, that was planned for capital this year, but we had other things that gotten in the way. And with our budget situation, it didn't make the capital cut. But the bottom line, what I want to say is. So we aerate, we fertilize every year. We got the right kind of fertilizer. It doesn't stain the headstones. That has helped that turf, even through the water restrictions, because we really only watered once a week last year. This year we've stepped it up a little bit and watered more. But the reality is we can't really improve that turf. In other words, we can't put seed down until we get away from a manual system because we need to keep that seed damp twice a day or so. We can't count on spring, you know, rain to do it for us and we can't do it manually. And what Councilman Sanger said is whatever we do, we probably better off to start one section at a time because it would be less funding, but we could get that automated and start making repairs to that turf. And it would happen, you know, in a few years. It wouldn't take too long to overseed and prove the soil. The soils aren't horrible in a lot of those areas. So, but until we get an automated system, there's not much else we can do as far as the turf, turf grass.
Councilman Eisenberg, you had something?
Yeah, I just want to say, along with the scoreboard that I feel is needed. For recreation, I'd like to possibly see another option could be to enclose the batting cages and add another shelter on the side for the equipment because this stuff sits outside all year long. I've said this multiple times, Rollins is great at building stuff, not maintaining something. So here we got these batting cages. It's been out there for years. It costs a lot of money to maintain them and bring them back into service every year. When they start doing it, it supplies a great place for indoor year round. Availability at the same time and the equipment used to maintain the, the ball fields there would be able to be inside also. So that's just another option I'd like to see done also.
A quick note on that, we did get a grant recently to put all brand new netting on that. So we could hold off on that and maybe refocus that grant. Because in closing that, we're talking about a much bigger dollar figure. Love the idea. But when we opened that for the first time in three years this spring, people were out there day and night.
So it would allow for a full year, year round training facility.
That building is not a 10,000.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, we did, we did two years towards a dog park when we did it. And it's not, it could be an option to do that again this time or utilize that money towards a grant. Because you could probably have a building built for 60,000 over that.
I'm going to be a little bit selfish here. I'd like to see this money spent on Bolton Park. And I'll tell you why. It's because when you drive by there, it's almost always got people in it. It, it really needs, it really needs an upgrade. It, it's, I don't know how old it is, how long it's been since it's had any kind of an upgrade. But when you drive by there, you see a lot of out of town folks. And when they come into Rollins, they end up at Bolton Park a lot of times. And they get out and stretch their legs, run their kids and whatnot. And I, I think we could, I think we could look better to the traveling public. That, you know, it's kind of weird because when they moved Interstate 30, which was Main Street, our main street's Bruce and Cedar, out to Interstate 80, our, our dirty backyard became our front door. And that's exactly the way I see it. And Bolton Park, if you drive by there, it is used by a lot of out of town folks that. You know, it was a really nice park. They might just spend more time here.
It's also used, probably one of our highest used parks for locals as well. You drive out there anytime after school, there's a lot of people out there.
I, I agree. Drive by there to go home and I noticed that. So I'm just going to throw that out there for discussion and. And, you know, we upgraded Washington Park and we did some other, you know, things in other parks. I would just like to see us do that in, in that park. Councilman Garner.
Forgot this one. This was actually recommended by a couple of people. A footsaw build that's at a park and Bolton Park has a pretty big basketball court, doesn't it? It's got a decent size. Is that court, do you know, big enough for a footsaw? If they were to build a, like, you know, put the layout on the court and then. The, the thing with footsaw is you need the tall fencing, correct?
Well, foots, technically footsaw is played on a basketball court surface. So there's no walls required. You play from the lines.
Okay.
Indoor soccer is the sport that you play from the, off the wall.
Well, no, I was just thinking for the containment. So you're not chasing the ball because it's so high speed. But it's, it was, it's been asked a couple of times and I, the one gentleman, I told him this might be a good place to present it. I don't think he can make it tonight. So, but it, it could be an upgrade for Bolton Park. And, you know, it'll draw more people from the north side of town down to go down and play that. Because it's a, it's a pretty big thing from what I've, I've heard around other communities. I think it's even older generation plays as well.
I'm, I'm not against that or anything. It's just that I, I know that if we fix the things that are wrong at Bolton Park, the $11,000 is not going to be enough. And then when you add two, you know what I mean? Maybe that would be when we, when we rebuild or redo Bolton Park, we could maybe aim towards that, like get the place, you know, ready because it's, it's not flat. You can't, there's a lot of sports you can't play there because of the way, you know, certain things need done. But, you know, I'm just trying to think within that price range of 11,000. So when we're done, we make a really nice improvement. We make something really nice to look at. And that plaque from the gas company would look really great from Community Gas. And this is clear off the subject, but I forgot to say it and I need to say it now. I got a phone call from Black Hills Energy about the street cuts. And it was after our meeting and they were, you know, they were very serious about getting it done. They, they were apologetic because those street cuts weren't done earlier. They did get a contractor to do it, mass grading. And I had a discussion with Kelly Brandt, who owns mass grading. I feel totally comfortable. And anyway, kudos to that Black Hills Energy for getting that done. They got right on it. They got a local contractor, did a great job. Anyway, I want, I want, you know, I complained about them and now I want to thank them, you know, credits, credits.
One comment on the, on the outdoor basketball court at Bolton Park is I believe it would need, I wouldn't say significant, but maybe significant concrete repairs with the cracks and elevate, I don't think there's elevated trip hazards or anything, but I think it would need some, some, then that if, once you start talking concrete work, there goes that $11,000. But I'd be more, if, if the council wishes, I'd be curious to hear more about what specifically at Bolton Park. I know we, we've done a lot of work that we haven't finished as far as removing all the old brush and everything on those high raised garden beds. We just haven't planted anything until we're completely out of water restrictions. I know the, the boards in the, along the base of the road, along the way, those all need to be replaced. That would make a big difference in driving by. I know Debary Martinez was, was. Encouraged us to work on that as well. The restrooms honestly need to be replaced, but at a bare minimum, we can replace the fixtures and everything inside the bathrooms and then give it a facelift on the exterior without having to replace everything. So there's all kinds of stuff we could do there, just at the.
I think with that amount of money, that park could look. I realize we'd be putting a paint job on a pig. I get that, but it could look and function a lot better. Anyway, those are my thoughts. And then Councilman Eisenberg had something else.
Yeah, I just was curious because I know we had applied for grants or, and stuff like that, or received some grant money for restrooms and installation of restrooms, I thought, a while back. We did not get that. So that would be another idea is possibly a restroom at the Key Club Park where the skate park and the dog park is too.
That's actually our highest priority for any next new development of any of our parks or any capital ask. We really are to the point where we need a restroom facility there.
But totally agree. That's going to outrun that 11,000 quite a bit, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, we like the idea of getting a vaulted toilet because they can stay open longer. We don't want to run water sewer to them or anything like that. So we don't have to blow out the lines and close them, you know, Labor Day weekend. But I think, I think you can get one for 40, 50,000, somewhere around there. A double, kind of like it, sort of like at the outdoor shooting range, similar, very similar to those. They're nice, you know, they're not, they don't have a sink to wash your hands when you're done, which is not ideal. But, but that's the smaller price tag and it's open longer. Because we get travelers at that dog park year round. I mean, there could be two feet of snow and there's Nebraska or several states over that are parked right at that dog park. And so it'd be nice to have restrooms that are open longer, but.
I'm just trying to think of a project that. We don't have to have 47 plaques on there. We want one for that gas company. So, and that's what they want. It's something for them to point at when, you know, anyway. Pam, did you have something?
I was just going to say, we paid 50,000 for the depot one that has running water sinks and everything. So just to give you guys a ballpark, we paid 50,000 for that one.
That's what, that's what I thought they were kind of up there.
To the site though, right?
Yeah, so probably 60,000.
So that was just to take it from a tree. So that was just to take it from a trailer and drop it right there. They had to get everything ready underground, but yeah.
But sixteen for side-by-side with a drinking, water fountain, water, sink, everything.
Okay. Well, I, I think this was a discussion, we're not gonna make a decision tonight. Uh, if anybody has any other ideas, please bring them to the next meeting. Uh, we'll probably put it on as an action item and, uh, and we'll go from there. And in the meantime, Jason, i- if you could, some of these projects we've talked about, maybe try to figure out, is there, is there an eleven thousand and whatever-sized project out there that would, uh, serve us best? It is, I don't wanna be like the little kid who went to grocery store and has four dollars and eighty-three cents or has to, have to spend four dollars and eighty-three cents, I mean...
On specific project discussed here or possibly other projects?
Well, if you wanna bring another idea, that's fine too, but, um, you know, I'd like the idea to come from the council.
Yeah.
And, um, or be brought to us, we, I mean, you know, what's best for the city, that's what I want.
Perfect, so can I ask this? Is it appropriate to reach out to other departments to see if they have a use for this funding?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, if it takes two or three meetings to decide, I don't care. We have till the end of the year, right?
Yes.
To decide?
Yes.
I just wanna see it spent the best way, most visible way for the Community Gas also. So they feel really good about giving it to us and, and, and also so we can, it's an, it will be another win we can point at.
Yeah.
So.
Perfect.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, moving on. Next thing on our agenda is Councilman, uh, Wells.
I'm going to go into executive session at nine thirty-six P M. per Wyoming Statute sixteen, four, four oh five. Consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law. Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at nine thirty-six P M. Per Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, motion passes for six yeas.
All right, thank you.
And Jack, and Jackson, put this on the calendar, I read that sometime.
You would?
I read, no, it's law.
Cuz it was like this.
Yeah. It's, it's easier to not wire that one back up and make it, you know, you know what I mean? They don't need a lot of it. Later, it wasn't thought about later on. It's out there, yeah. So that's what I'm saying.
And that's kinda the, I mean, I understand when he's talking about sea and you have to, I mean, you have...
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, if it dries one time, especially if it's... Well, if it comes up.
And it dries totally, one time, yeah, and you're done.
To which guys are straight. There's another one that's about... And, and a little bit, but it's just...
Is it, is it running this up where you're coming in?
Yeah, so when you're, when you're going up, it's like the second or third entrance, you know? If you tell me I follow that, you're not gonna know. Yeah, I think the numbers is...
Was it a conversion flag?
Let me, let me look at my picture.
Tell me there's not a better view of getting rawls than the golf course.
I think David and I, I don't know, we're better, but we had medicine. And we didn't go to, I mean, we just, we didn't...
We got over to the house, but we didn't go in.
It's actually... Well, I don't know, we don't have the skin.
I wasn't.
Set up.
That was...
Things, which was very strange. When their parents were down.
Looks good, so.
I'm trying to find your entrance, but they don't show.
Oh, I can't, you can't read. So if you're...
There were a couple things around.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know, maybe that little white woman that's there will indicate, I don't know, there is. But anyway.
We'll see if I can find it.
I mean, I looked it up, it's like, is the ball smaller than his?
I think so, it's like the highest...
Yeah.
And I looked it up, and I looked it up and I'm like...
It's a smaller ball, so it's a faster game.
Yeah, and then they play on the concrete, so it's like super high.
I never even heard of it. I just looked it up and I spelled it wrong.
Well, that's the thing, I couldn't find the T S.
That's all, T S, well, that's not how you spell it.
Well, I knew, yeah, so I've, I've heard of it and the one guy who was talking to me, he said there's a, there's a group of crystal... Well, that's... Kinda like it, if you have an ancient data, which in that way, you're probably, you can't tell the others. You know, it's, it's just one of my stories.
Yeah.
Just different.
Yeah.
But, thank you guys.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. No.
And he went to the army and they raised a big problem with flames. And they couldn't get the... And your son sold one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand. Your ass was bad. The world's largest... Or, no. In the northern hemisphere, it was in Madison, Oklahoma. Your fellow, the sheep-rank wagon was invented here.
I knew about that.
Edison invented the light bulb here, supposedly.
Yeah, I got it.
The history carries, it was so robust, you can't believe how history's invented here. I usually... Just everyday things you would think about, like there.
The town I moved here from had the world's tallest total plant. And then somebody, in some organization, built one six inches tall. So they put it in ten...
It's like they're doing the cities.
All right.
I wish I had thought of this about three hours ago or whenever this meeting started.
Monday before. I just, as I said, I got home last night at one A M.
I don't know if they want to stick it down now or...
I'm waiting to get told too, if they were first on the list or what, I just said, I asked where you were, he said, you're in here, and they didn't say, come on down, or whatever, he said, I'm going to the bathroom and I'll be ready, and that's... Yeah, so...
I'm just gonna pick up all the stuff and whenever you guys go in, I will make a note.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, what do we for?
Yeah, we just put it in there.
We were the ones on the list.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You guys.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's locked down there too, so. If you're full.
Um. Um.
Good. All right. Well, this is about, uh, thirty nine fifty sessions on board. Good. Um, that's the. Big deal here. We were talking. All right. Good. Good, uh, sorry, I told you about.
He, you ready?
That's right. Good.
I'm gonna style a whole page just so people can print those words.
I wasn't sure.
Everyone's on my green shirt on and like.
Well, I should get better, I didn't have it.
I've been working on it, my head's up three weeks. I haven't written it down. I have something to do.
I'm gonna roll out.
Thank you, she.
Yeah, first one. You're welcome. Oh, yeah. Relax. It's like, it's forty degrees up there. There's um, out here, it's like thirty degrees. You don't get much. The worst was when the show was pretty bad. Did you ever see a big intersection where they'd go with every corner?
Yeah, I've seen it before.
And you're. Do you know anything about turning? So, there. Jersey.
So. I mean, I mean.
Do you think you. Four right to one, all right. Excellent. Like this, you know, half of this, you have to divide. All right. Have a good night. You know, we go out. Uh. We, uh. Just do this. I think we must. Are we just like. All right. Here's. So. These are what I'm. What do you know? Good.
I'll see you later. Ten, eleven.
Eleven.
It's eleven after ten.
Yeah, we should have come here earlier.
Do you have any meetings in the morning or so?
I'm gonna try and work out. I'm tired of complaining about the audit, we just gotta. I'll get out. Think if I'm gonna do four hour shifts. Four on the audit, four on my education, four on the month end reports. Four on the audit.
Okay. So just let me know what you'd like to do.
Yeah, I'll tell you. Well.
Okay, just let me know what you would like to do.
I need to sleep that more.
Yeah, I might for a little bit.
Just, uh. Just. I gotta get well and energized for Friday night.
I know. Yes.
Can you say it's just business casual?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a suit and tie for me?
I want.
Oh, yes. I don't mind with that, I just.
Yeah, I.
I don't wanna wear dress.
No, like I said, Jim wore a suit and tie. Because it was the governor, the last time we went.
He was there.
Yeah.
Last time.
Yeah, so, and I don't know who's giving the speech. Here we come. Yes.
The casting's bad.
You guys cleared out the room?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, I was gonna ask. Is there. Feels a lot better up here. Are you guys okay if we put this back over here? When it sits there, I can't see and hear very well when these guys talk. Okay? If, I don't know. I wasn't here when it got moved. But I was gonna ask, 'cause I, tonight, I'm like peeking. Trying to see over. But I was gonna ask, 'cause I, tonight, I'm like peeking around, trying to see over it.
I like it right here, 'cause I can't see people there.
You can't, when they're here?
Yeah. It's tough.
I don't like them here, 'cause there's a sidebar always go on and shit like that and that. It's not acceptable.
Well, I can't see these guys, and that's the problem I'm running into. Here, yeah, hearing them and seeing them.
Just turn the mic up.
Just move it to the middle of them.
I'll move them around.
See where it's at. Okay. Right here, right here.
Counselman Weisenberg.
I move to come out of executive session at ten fifteen PM.
Second.
There been a motion made in second to come out of executive session at ten fifteen PM. Any discussion? Please open online voting.
My voting is open. My voting has closed. The motion passes with six shades.
All right, thank you.
I wish you... Thank you.
I would entertain a motion. Counselman Weisenberg?
I move to approve and pay state claim number two zero two dash PV dash twen- twenty-three dash zero zero one one zero three nine in the amount of four thousand three hundred and three dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
There been a motion made in second to approve and pay state claim number two oh two PV dash twenty-three dash oh oh one one oh three nine in the amount of forty-three oh three and fifteen cents. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Um, they're not supposed to have a dollar amount in those. That's the reason why I leave it blank.
Okay.
That's what I was...
It's okay. We can do that.
Okay.
Do you accept that as an amendment? Who, who made that motion?
Yeah.
Um, Chris?
I, I...
Do you accept that as friendly amendment? Who seconded it?
I did, and I accept.
Thank you. Do you wanna open online voting?
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six shades.
All right, thank you. I would entertain a motion for this set of minutes. Counselman Lumen?
Move to approve the executive session minutes of September fifth, twenty twenty-three, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
There been a motion made in second to approve the executive session minutes of September fifth, twenty twenty-three, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with five shades and one of staying and one of aiming.
All right, is there anything else to come in front of this body?
Nope.
Bearing nothing, I will adjourn. And this meeting and the next meeting is October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
I will, don't... No, I'll be back, okay? I'll be gone, man.
I'm sorry.